The City of Algoma Council, Common Council Meeting today, Monday, December seventh, two thousand twenty. I would like our Administrator to take the role, please.
Mayor?
Here.
Dashill is excused. Brewer?
Here.
Gressel is excused. Wees?
Here.
Meverden?
Here.
Pabick?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Six President.
Okay. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda as published?
I move we skip the reading of committee meetings into the text and accept as is.
I'll second that.
So your, would you repeat your motion?
I move that we accept the committee minutes as written and skip the reading of them into the record.
And it was seconded by Kevin?
Yeah.
Discussion? Is this going to be on a permanent basis or is this just for this evening?
Just this evening. I don't see any point. There, 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 there are very few committees that have met and the ones that have have comprehensive minutes and I really don't see the need for us to bother going through the exercise.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to amend the agenda to not read the meeting minutes from the different committees tonight. There's been a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Then I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That being said, we will go right down to the check registers. Everybody have a chance to review the bills? Are there any questions or comments on any of the bills?
Point of order, Mayor. We, they still need to vote to accept the minutes for the city council. That motion, that motion, that motion was to basically turn the committee reports into an omnibus.
And then I asked for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Correct, but they still need to accept the minutes. They accepted the changed agenda, but not the minutes.
Well, all right, then let's go back. All right, so we're not reading any of the minutes. So are we gonna have a motion to accept all the minutes as published?
So moved.
Moved by John?
Second by.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now those were the minutes for the special council meeting. So now next on the agenda, we have the check registers. Did everybody have a chance to review those bills?
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Amber?
The normally, it appears that Jamie would provide to you guys with a spreadsheet for the entire city's credit card charges for the last statement.
Right.
I did not get time to get that done, so that is not in your packets. I will have that for your next meeting at Finance and Personnel.
Yeah, me there.
Okay. That being said, does anybody else have any questions or comments about the, about the bills? Not will accept the motion?
Scott has something.
Excuse me?
I just wanna, I see that we have on here that we have payment to August winter for the stormwater lift station. Just wanted to confirm with Matt that that did come in exactly at or under budget and if there's any info, how, how things are working. I know we haven't had torrential downpours as of yet, but just curious, there's an update?
Yeah, so I can give a, a quick or a brief update here. So August winters, per their contract at the Sixth Street Stormwater Lift Station, have met substantial completion. The new pumps are in, the new drives are in, the PLC is operating. We did have the Friday before the opening day of deer hunting, we did have a startup where we worked probably eight AM to about three o'clock in the afternoon. That night, about midnight, one o'clock in the morning, we had some, some issues with the drives. Those since opening day of deer hunting have been addressed and fixed and yes, everything has moved along at budget. We're waiting on a couple of things yet for final payment from August winters.
Thanks.
Any other questions on any of the bills? Then I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Who is that? Scott?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
There are no conference attendance. Are there any other claims against the city at this time, Jared?
Nope.
Okay. Then I'll accept a motion to approve the following committee reports as listed, Finance and Personnel, Protection of Persons and Property, Park and Rec, Community Development, there wasn't any Tourism and Promotion, Library, and Utility.
So moved.
Moved by Jake?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Let us move on to old business. Ordinance eight thirty, that was amending the zoning ordinance for parcel thirty-one, two oh one, thirty-four point oh eight one six. That's the fifteen oh eight Sunset Avenue. This was the second reading of this. This is the building on the corner of Sunset and Rubus that the individual bought, the motor parts person downtown here, and we needed to rezone that. Does anybody have any questions on that? This is the second reading, so we could get it adopted tonight. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Jackie?
Second.
Second by Casey. You know, roll call vote on that, it's an ordinance change.
Wees?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Next is item B, ordinance eight thirty-one, that's amending the Article Three of the City of Algoma Code of Ordinances relating to the use of snowmobiles and all terrain vehicles in the City of Algoma. This was also the second reading. Any questions?
I got a couple.
Casey, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, am I, am I right in that the, the routes for the UTV ATV is different than the snowmobile? Based on the reading of the, the ordinance? Like there are only two main entries for the snowmobiles, whereas there are more regulated ATV, UTV ones?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess generally, you know, with, with the ATV, UTV, what, I'm looking for the, what's, is there any downside, is there any upside? And I guess I'm looking for perspective from, I guess, apparently law enforcement, probably it's not an issue with noise, because that's all kind of clearly covered in there, but if there's any, any potential pitfalls that Randy sees, and then also what generally the, the benefit, the greater benefit might be for the city.
Randy, do you have any comments on that?
No, there's no.
Why don't you come up here? Why don't you come and sit by me, Randy? You can sit up, you can sit right there.
So as everybody knows, the, as far as the ordinance goes, it's basically the same thing that's, that the county has and our neighboring townships have. They're currently allowed everywhere except for the City of Algoma, City of Kiwanee, and Luxembourg. So we're the last three jurisdictions that don't allow ATVs within the jurisdiction itself. The ordinance that we drafted is based on the county, so it falls in line, it does require all the same safety requirements, does require that you have a driver's license, that you have to pass safety course, and have insurance on your vehicle. And the speeds on the roads have to be posted thirty-five or less, so it's something you just can't drive down a county road, that's fifty-five miles per hour outside the city. So it's, it falls in line with what the county has right now. As far as pros and cons, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a opinion issue. How a city council feels one way or the other, I mean, we can enforce it, that's not a problem, it's like we enforce the mobiles. Is that, just gonna kind of answer your question?
Yeah, no, that's, that's perfect. I, I guess the, the, the opinion of it was, was more kind of a general thing, but the, the beginning part was specific to you. So yeah, you, you hit it where I was looking for it. Thank you.
Jake? Jake, we couldn't hear you if you had a question.
Yes, I did. Do the vehicles have to be licensed?
Yes.
So the, the state does issue a snowmobile license as well as an ATV license?
Do you know, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the, what the snowmobile issue, I, I don't know, off the top of my head, I have to actually go back, take a look and read it.
It's actually the DNR. It was the DNR.
Yeah, the, as far as the snowmobiles, typically the DNR controls the, the actual routes they do and they actually patrol. The DNR actually has snowmobiles, they patrol those. We, we don't, because a cop car doesn't go down a snowmobile trail very, very well.
Well, no, but if they're accessing the city, they have to have a license.
Yes, within the city itself, that's when we hit, usually get involved with snowmobilers. The time we, we run into them is if they're being excessively, the way it's currently right now, if they're going too the route to get out to the city is fine. But the problems we have is like, they're going to Bob's house down the street and they're not trying to get to the path. That's when they have issues with us.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none? Motion, please?
I move now we adopt the ordinance.
Moved by John?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Roll call vote, please.
Wees?
Yes.
Thanks, Randy.
Brewer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes care of old business. Let's move on to new business. Resolution number one zero five one, two thousand twenty, amending the two thousand twenty budget. Amber, do you have any comments?
This is the same thing from, sorry, we're gonna go up to the camera. Yeah, easier for the people at home on Zoom. So this is the same thing everyone's seen at the Finance and Personnel meeting. The only change we made was to the dog licensing. It was two hundred and sixty-one dollars. I had that one in there twice, so we took it out. That was the only change. The vast majority of the amendments are being covered by a grant that Chief Remicker got for drug trafficking, the routes to recovery grant, and a huge increase in our interest in the savings account that we weren't expecting this year. We will not see quite those earnings next year, but this year we did yet.
Any questions or comments? These were things that were all gone over at the Finance and Personnel meeting and, and recommendation was made to forward it on to council, so. I'll accept the motion on that resolution? Hello? I'll accept the motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Casey?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution ten fifty-two dash twenty twenty, that is amending the park and recreation fee schedule. Again, this was discussed at the Finance and Personnel, and the recommendation was made to bring it to council for approval. Any questions on it? I'll accept.
I did have a quick question in regards to the rental change for Knutson and the Youth Club. Is that just for the first hour, or is that, it's still ten dollars per additional hour, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll accept the motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by, was that John?
Well, I was one of them.
Okay, I, I only heard you, so you made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution ten fifty-three dash twenty twenty, authorizing an agreement with Verbecker for comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. This is needed for the Park and Rec to apply for any grants through the state of Wisconsin. If you don't have a comprehensive plan in place, they do not allow you to apply for any grants, so. Again, this was something that was discussed at Finance and Personnel, and there was a motion made to bring it to council for approval this evening. Motion?
I move we accept the resolution, authorizing agreement with Verbecker for comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Motion made by John?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution ten fifty-four dash twenty twenty, adopting the twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five capital improvement plan. That is attached. Any questions on that? Did everybody have a chance to go over it? This should be the same thing we saw at the Finance and Personnel, so. There was no changes, right, Amber?
One change to Marina.
Marina?
Forks, if Matt wants to talk about it.
Matt, do you have a, want to discuss the change at the Marina, according to what Amber said?
Is, is that for the B dock, Amber?
Your adjustable forks.
Adjustable forks?
Oh, yes, okay, so it added in there that you didn't see last year, that kind of jumped up. There's a set of forks from SAS Forks in Luxembourg that we're looking to purchase in two thousand twenty-one. With the move, moving of putting all the new docks in in spring, taking all the new docks out in fall. Every time we do that, I have to rent a set of forks from J. Jaden Escavating. It's a just over seven thousand dollar purchase that the city would own a set of eight foot long forks and able to, enable us to get through the six foot center dock sections and remove them out of the water and put them back in the water in the spring.
What's the rental cost?
What do I pay J. Jaden? I think the last two times that I rented him, I think I paid him like two hundred and fifty bucks.
Any other questions? I, I only have one question. I thought that River Harbor Boat Lease, I thought we had talked about that, we weren't gonna do that. Scott? You remember that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
That, it, that two thousand twenty-one capital improvement for the police department for the River Harbor Ops Boat Lease. I thought we were gonna, we weren't gonna do that, because we said it was too hard to enforce. No?
Uh, I'm gonna have to defer that one to Randy. I, I don't believe that, I'm under the understanding that we're utilizing the, the boat that we purchased. The city bought.
Well, that's not a lease. That, that boat, I think the public works purchased outright for, I can't imagine the, or remember the fee, but thousand dollars. This is, this is a lease of a boat. Randy?
So this would go hand in hand with the D, I'm sorry, DNR grant, they would, they actually would reimburse us, and that's the money that we've been there. So there's actually a line on them and, on revenues that offsets that. So if, if we get the grant, we spend the money. If we don't get the grant, we don't spend the money. And that's purely for patrolling water.
Right.
As far as I know, it was discussed, but I didn't hear that it was turned off.
Well, I, the only, you know, recollection I have is that when we talked about it, we said, okay, it takes personnel. And that was a question I had, because you're not gonna have your officer that's on duty also patrolling with a boat, so. I think I didn't realize that we were going ahead with it, but you're saying if there's no grant money, then you don't get the boat? But the grant money would over, only cover the lease of the boat, correct?
Correct.
We'd still have the manpower and everything that we would be
Correct.
liable for. Okay.
Which if we use the city boat, we're still liable for.
Right, but I think the city boat, Matt, basically gets used down at the Marina for taking docks in and out, and then we happen to use it for that tragedy that we had down at the Marina several months ago. Other than that, the boat doesn't get used for too much, right? You don't patrol, you don't go up and down the river with it.
Matt doesn't, he's not, he's not law enforcement, he's.
Right.
That is correct.
So I'm just looking, I'm just questioning this, because I, I don't know how much, they've got in here approximately five thousand dollars for an annual expense. So does that mean that's something, Amber, that's gonna be budgeted every year to operate that boat then, if we get it?
With the offsetting revenue, yes. As long as he continues to get the grant.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any other questions on anything? Hearing none? Then I guess we will move on and take him, accept the motion. I just got bumped out here. Bear with me, I got bumped out of my computer. Okay, we're back to the capital improvement, resolution ten fifty-four. Are there any other questions on that? No? Then I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Jackie?
Second.
Second by Kevin? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's it for the resolutions this evening. We have requests by the Algoma Fire Department to approve Bryce Durst as a probationary member of the Algoma Fire Department. I'll need a motion on that.
So moved.
Moved by Scott?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the hire of the city clerk position. I will turn this over to Jared at this time. Turn the camera, Jared.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor alluded to, as you see on the agenda, we have on here approval for a new clerk hire. We wrapped up our interview process right before the Thanksgiving holiday, and we extended an offer to an applicant, very well qualified. Her name is Julie Schmelzer. She comes to us with decades of local government experience. Previously, a county administrator in the state of Oregon, but is look, is moving back here and is looking to, for lack of a better term, downsize from a management role and wants to learn, he wants, wants a new role and a non-administrative one, non-administrative, like a non-managerial one. And, uh, you know, wants to come here and, and learn how to do elections, but is otherwise, you know, eminently qualified for the position. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I, you know, I would say I'm very happy with the pool we had. We had, it's always good when your, your most difficult decision is deciding who not to offer the job to, because we had a lot of well-qualified applicants. But at the end of the day, you know, we, we are recommending who we believe is the best candidate for the job.
Could you repeat that name, please?
Julie Schmelzer.
Thank you.
Any questions of Jared on the hire? When is she starting, Jared?
December twenty-eighth.
And she's moving from Oregon?
Correct.
And are we covering her moving costs?
She did not ask for that. She was already moving here. She, she was moving back to the state of Wisconsin, just north of town here, and so, no, she did not ask for any sort of financial reimbursement for that.
So I want to make sure she's moving from the state of Oregon, not the township of Oregon in Wisconsin?
Co- correct.
Okay.
She was born and raised in Wisconsin, in this area, so she's.
I recognize the name.
Yeah, she's a hometown girl, just coming back. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the recommendation to hire Julie Schmelzer as the city clerk for the City of Algoma.
So moved.
Moved by John?
Second.
Second by Casey? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, let's move on to the Administrator's Report, Jared? Are we not having, we're having that tonight, right?
Yeah, we certainly can. Turn the camera back around.
Yeah, they want to see you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as I just alluded to here, we have completed the clerk position. Obviously, we just authorized the hire of that. Employee handbook update. I turned the handbook, the draft handbook over to the department heads for review. They have completed that review and submitted their notes and comments back to me. So now I am giving it another review, and then I will be sending it to the league of Wisconsin municipalities. They have an HR attorney on staff who provides a free HR legal source for, well, I shouldn't say legal source. It's not technically legal advice, they want to make that very clear, but nonetheless, free review to polish it up a little bit. And then any outstanding issues from that attorney, I will then send to our contracted labor attorneys at Davis and Kelthaus for final review. And then we'll bring that forward to the council as soon as possible for adoption. First, we'll go to Finance and Personnel and then the council. So the goal is to have that in January or as quickly as possible. COVID nineteen updates. We've spent our routes to recovery allocation, and we submitted, we actually had a little bit more than our grant allotment, so we submitted for additional reimbursement. We'll see what the result of that is. I feel pretty confident we'll get it, just because there was such a large pool of money left over from other municipalities, but again, we'll, we'll see what happens there. The only change since the last Administrator's Report is that we had additional wage and benefit costs incurred from the FF-CRA leave, which is the COVID leave. City Hall access, so we were talking about this a lot internally. As everyone knows, we've had city hall closed except by phoning ahead or phoning when you get to the door, and we come let someone in one household at a time. However, with property tax collection coming up, we just, we feel that given the, the high demand that the residents of Algoma have to pay in person, and in particular, pay with cash, we are concerned about the security if we just have people only utilize the Dropbox. So we'll handle it the same way we handled the election, which is allowing one member or one resident or one household at a time, come into the actual office space and, and submit the payment. If there's a queue forming up, we would just have them wait in a separate area, again, much like with the election. So with all that being said, for the audience at home, I would strongly encourage using another means to pay the property taxes other than coming and paying in cash, but obviously, that's, that's their choice. It's obviously, just with everything going on, we're, we're just recommend that they don't do that method. Operators licenses, you can see listed in the report that were approved by the clerk. And there's a note here, in April, as you know, we have a city council election coming up for four spots. District one, the incumbent John Pabick. District two, the incumbent Jackie Wees. District three, Mitch Gressel, and district four, Lee Dashill. And we have the paperwork basically ready to go in the office.
Texas will be going out when?
This week. They, we know that the bills are printed, they're ready to be picked up at the county. I'll be going there tomorrow to pick them up. And then we will be stuffing envelopes this week and, or going out this week.
So is it your intent to open city hall up as Friday, for this week, or wait till Monday or next week?
If we get them out by Wednesday, then I would say, yeah, we'd open it up Friday. Or even Thursday, I guess, because people would get their bill presumably on Friday, if it went out Thursday.
Okay.
So, yep.
Okay, any questions of the Administrator at this point? Okay, any questions of the administrator at this point?
I have a question, have we been contacted at all about the validity of our absentee ballots?
No, we haven't been contacted.
I know that there was an initiative that started here in Kiwanee County about that, and I was wondering if we'd been contacted.
No, we have not. Uh, I do know that the state did random audits of certain municipalities. Um, the nearest one that I'm aware of is, coincidentally enough, Two Rivers. Um, but, uh, other than that, no, we have not been contacted regarding the election.
Okay.
Any other questions of Jared?
Thank you.
Under Mayor's appointments, uh, I would like the council to approve the appointment of Jake Brettle. Uh, Jake is a freshman at, uh, Algoma High School, and I'd like to appoint him as a student rep to the Park and Recreation Committee.
So moved.
Uh, who made that, Kevin?
Kevin.
Motion was made by Kevin. Who's second at Ja?
I'll second.
Second by John. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then I have a vacancy now on the Algoma Housing Authority with the passing of Rowena Gores. I would like to appoint Karen Schmidt to the, uh, Algoma Housing Authority. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Scott?
Second.
Second by Jackie? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Well, you don't have to, but, okay, Kevin abstain.
Oh, I don't? Oh, I thought I had to, well then, yes.
She don't get paid, you don't get paid, that's fine, if you want abstain, you don't have to though.
Oh, okay, yes, then, I didn't know.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Agenda items for next meeting, if you have anything, please reach out to Jared. Um, we look forward to the new clerk coming aboard, uh, so that we can get, hopefully get back to some normalcy around here. Our next finance and personnel meeting will be, uh, the third Tuesday of this month. And at that point, now, anybody that's at home, uh, I wanna wish everybody a very happy holiday and a very successful two thousand twenty-one. And hopefully, it'll be a lot better than two thousand twenty has been, especially with this COVID. And again, remind everybody, please stay safe and wear your mask at all times if possible. Thank you, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by John?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.